So each person, including you, John, have the ability to stop.
Stop the video?
Stop the video. You're still participating in the call, but they can't see you. So it's a good, good thing to do. Like if Dennis is trying to get something to eat and doesn't want, we don't want to see him chewing.
Yeah. All right.
Or if Jean, Jean comes to, you know, tell you something urgent, you could stop the video and yourself and chat with her.
Okay.
I'm also running into bandwidth issues where if I have video and audio, the audio that I'm hearing is crackly. So if I kill my video, it seems to be better.
That's really interesting, Denver, because earlier when you had your video running and you spoke, your audio was terrible. It was almost, it was almost difficult to understand you. And now that your video is off, you're, you came through clearly. So that, that, that's interesting.
Good.
Yeah. What else do we need to know about Zoom? You know how to mute and unmute yourself, starting and stopping your video is down in that same area. For those of you that haven't used the participant icon in the lower part of your screen, there's a little icon that says participants. It has two people in the icon. And when you click on that, it brings up a list of the participants on the right side of your screen. And sometimes it's helpful because you have some options over there in terms of muting and renaming yourself and that sort of thing. As I explained in the email, I've turned off the chat function and the file sharing function and the, the screen annotation function for participants. I can, not sure if I can turn those back on in the middle of a, of a Zoom session. I, I know I can grant you all the ability to annotate a, a screen share that I might put up. The only reason not to have those functionalities is in case somebody joined the meeting and tried to disrupt it. And, and those are, those are functions that allow that to happen more easily. When it's just us talking, we could have those functions running, but they're not at the moment. Maggie, is there anything else I'm forgetting about sort of Zoom protocol that you want to help people with since you're a, you're a frequent user?
No, I mean, let's just see how it goes having, having a conversation. I think, you know, you're right, with such a small group that we should be able to just jump in and, and speak.
Okay. Well, then that's the Zoom protocol. Again, the meeting is being recorded and live streamed by V-Cam. Thank you, V-Cam. So the public may be watching right now from their, from their armchairs, the way they, they could have in the past. So if your significant other decides to come visit you, just, you know, make sure they know they're, they're being recorded.
Alrighty then.
And Maggie, it's all, it's all yours.
Okay. So let's move on to item number two, which is agenda changes. Does anyone have any agenda changes?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Number three is public comments for non-agenda items, which I'm assuming there are none, although you know, if, if somebody chooses to dial in or join us, I'd like to think that we could be open to any comments. So great. So that means we can move on to continue with our discussion of architectural and streetscape design standards. And we'd gotten through number six at our last meeting. I can't even remember where our last meeting was. It was beginning of March, I think.
It was.
March 11.
And yes, we made it through number six, which had to do with building height relief. And so similar to the last couple of iterations, I went back and made revisions based on our conversations from the last meeting and then forged ahead and, and finished drafting language for items seven through 11. So.
Yeah, I don't know what, what makes sense to you guys, but I, I'm, I'm sort of thinking that we could forge ahead and work through the, the ones that you've just completed, starting with number seven, and then come back and look at it all as a, as a whole. Or would you prefer to go back? I mean, to me, it makes sense to just go ahead and, and move forward, starting with, with seven.
That was your protocol over the last couple of meetings. So that would be consistent. Yeah, I'm happy to do that if the rest of the board is amenable.
All right then.
Hearing no objections. Number seven is related to streetscape and building details. And we've dealt with some streetscape issues in the earlier design standards. And so on this one, the focus is very much about landscaping that goes beyond just street trees and outdoor lighting and how to deal with utility and mechanical equipment along the streetscapes. So on page five of the document that I emailed out, and that's on the Dropbox site for this meeting, page five has number seven and, and has the, the three proposed bullets for, for streetscape details. I'm happy to put it up on screen if that would help anyone on the call. But if you have it in front of you and you want to refer to that, that's fine too.
Does everyone have it in, in front of them?
Yes.
I do. Dennis. I think putting it up, up on the screen for a minute would be helpful. Stevie took my computer upstairs to watch a movie, I think.
All right.
Right. And I don't, I don't have it on this computer I'm using.
Not a problem. Let me just find it and I will share it.
I'm thinking it would make sense for me to have printed out this, the documents that you included, Alex, and then have those paper right next to me. I can see them all the time.
Yes, that's, that's a helpful tip for the future. Sorry for the pause here. I am just finding the right screen. There we go. So that probably monkeyed with your view. You may need to readjust your Zoom window to make it larger or move it around a bit so you can still see some of the people thumbnails.
No, this is good.
And I'll scroll to the section that we are discussing.
Okay.
So I am at the, what you're seeing on screen is the, the top of page five, number seven, streetscape building details. And as you can see, you know, I, as we've talked about before, this, these kinds of things are dealt with in our existing design standards to a limited degree, but we talked about wanting to improve that. So this upper section is simply recognizing that. And I'll scroll down to what's proposed right there in the middle of the screen.
This is Barbara with a question.
Yeah.
I looked in our zoning regulations. Where do I find things like streetscape and building details that we have now?
Good question. So they're all in section 5.22.
Of the town plan?
No, of the zoning regulations.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay, I'll check it out. Thank you.
So section 5.22 is the section that is our village, village growth area design standards. And some of them deal with streetscape issues. So for example, 5.22.3 is really the section that does. And there's, there's a section that deals with the front building facade. There's a garage setback requirement. There's some roof line requirements. And then there's a standard for lar, large building facades. All of those are somewhat tangential, whereas the proposed language is much more direct about improving the streetscape in combination with some of the window treatments that we discussed in the earlier standards.
Alex, could you scroll back to the proposed standards there that you were showing further up on this page?
So the proposed standards are shown on the, in, in the shared document right now. If I scroll further up, you'll see some of the sections that deal with it currently in the regs. So let me see if I can do some screen annotation here to draw your attention to the right spot. Unfortunately, I am not seeing the annotation feature that I was hoping to see. So I don't know if you can see my cursor, probably not.
Yeah, I can.
You can see the cursor?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that helps then. So John, this, this part I'm circling right here says proposed and streetscape details. And then it's these three bullets below it, landscaping, outdoor, and utility and mechanical equipment. Proposed.
Yes, I guess I was speaking about that I shot, I thought you showed us before you scroll down to this section.
I can bring up that section of the existing regs if you'd like.
Yeah, that's just a, a reference to what's currently, what we currently have in the regs.
That's right.
Yes, that, that's what I wanted to look at again, what we currently have in, in the records, in the regulations.
Okay. Well, I can bring that up on screen again. Again, it's part of our existing zoning. And let me bring that document up and get to the right section and then I'll switch the screen share to show that.
The, the question I have, and I'm pretty sure it might apply, comments might apply in this 522.2 has to do with the orientation of the main axis line, the main ridge line of buildings that have sloped roofs. And it seems to me that it might be worth considering whether or not we suggest people try to stay on an east-west axis or say 20 degrees either side of an east-west axis for the main ridge line that orients the sloping sections of the roof more toward the south, giving an opportunity for solar there, both solar water heating as well as solar electric generation, a, as well as exposing that side of the building, giving opportunities for more windows for interior lighting. So that, that's why I'm wondering about that section, because I think it addresses orientation, could, could address orientation of that ridge line. If, if we want to go there.
So we did discuss that at the last meeting in, in March. And I think there was a bit of back and forth during that discussion about where the, the best place to, to place standards like that would be.
Right.
Whether, whether that would be part of the village area design standards or whether that might want to be a townwide issue and so on. My to-do list is to check in with the energy committee to show them a draft of this and ask them what they think about whether it makes sense to try to address it within these village growth area design standards or more globally within the green building standards in the zoning.
Okay. I mean, that, that sounds like a good approach. I think it could apply to the entire town. But I, I wanted, I didn't want to miss that kind of opportunity that, that we could have.
Okay. Well, if that makes sense, then that, that's.
We can, we can go on and.
Yeah, that's the, that's my homework for a future meeting is to get their input and see where the best places to, to bone up on that.
Sure.
South-facing language.
Yeah. And then when, when we revisit the, the root section, we can, we can revisit that.
Right, right.
Well, I, I like, I mean, I like this on the, on the streetscape details. I like the purpose statement. You know, encouraging pedestrian activity and, and providing visual interest as the, as the goal of these, these regulations.
Do we talk somewhere you guys about some of the obvious things? I'm sorry. And this is sort of like makes you kind of have tunnel vision. But say, you know, sidewalk widths and bike paths and, you know, back to the street profile thing. Is there a place, Alex? You know, we're talking about streetscape details and landscaping, outdoor lighting, you know, placement and mechanical equipment. Those are all part of that. But perhaps even more a part of it is like a sidewalk and the character of that sidewalk or the dimensional makeup of that sidewalk. Is that discussed somewhere? I, I think it is, but.
So it's not, it's not discussed anywhere yet. But when, when we talked about the very first design standard, I'll scroll up to it in the document that we're working on.
Yeah.
So hold on to your hats here. So when we, we talked about setbacks in, in design standard number one and a build to line, we wanted to, I should, you wanted to as a board differentiate between different types of streetscapes and, and create categories that when we have our graphic artists create some drawings, that we could put some of that detail into them.
Yeah.
And so we haven't fleshed that out. So it's, it's worth talking about now as a part of the, the design standard number seven, even if, you know, we do it for graphical illustration. But I think your intent as from your past discussions was to try to do a little bit of that, to have some typical diagrams that would show for category A, a mixed-use active streetscape, we would, we would see a, a typical sidewalks of this width with road widths like this and on-street parking like that.
Okay.
Whereas in a residential streetscape like category B, we might see this sort of a profile.
Okay.
You know, I, I think it was, and I'm glad you brought that up. I think it was maybe the Jericho regs where they, they had, I don't know what you'd call it, a, a slice or like a.
A profile or a section. Yeah.
Yeah, a section of, 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 just as Alex was describing of, of different, you know, residential street, rural residential street and, and so on. And it had had actual widths of sidewalks and if there was on-street parking and, and so on. And that would be fantastic. I mean, if we were to go into that kind of detail and.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. And, and to have, have our illustrator come up with, with something like that.
Yeah, that visually represents it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it in there, Alex?
I'm just trying to flip to it now real quick. So because yes, I believe you're right, Maggie, that it's in the Jericho excerpt and.
And I, I don't know if we're going to have that much variation, but I, I just found those sections very, very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, let me show you quickly what theirs looks like. Get my screen share back here. So this is, this is a neighborhood drive. If you can see this, sorry Barbara, but if the rest of you, if you can see the screen share, it, it gives you dimensions for the right-of-way width, pavement width, traffic lane width, parking lanes, all of that sort of stuff. And my vision, based on your prior discussions right at the beginning of this, is that for those street categories, A, B, C, D, it would be great to have an illustration that looks like this, you know, one for each, each of those.
Yeah. Yep.
Clearly there'll have to be some wiggle room in there. I'm not sure that we can be entirely prescriptive that it will always be this width of a sidewalk. Maybe it's a minimum width and then it might, might get wider in certain sections. But I, I think Maggie's got a good point. We can sort of present the Jericho model to whoever we're, we hired to do this work for us and see what they can do on that front.
Yep. All right. So that was the point of my question was, hey, where's, where's that information going to live? And in these sort of typical differentiated streets, you know, encompassing pedestrian bike, parking, vehicular circulation. What's that profile look like? That could easily be the tool we use to mandate some of those dimensional or advocate for some of, of those dimensional standards. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I'm very glad you brought it up, Ralph, because you're right. It's sort of like maybe the most important piece of the streetscape, more so than a flower box, for example. So it's good that we make sure that we're going to continue to cover that. And I think that it'll be key to get the, get other, get feedback from other departments, the highway department and the buildings and facilities, as well as the select board. So these pictures are going to help in that regard, have everyone to wrap their minds around what a streetscape might look like.
So I'm real curious, you guys, when you look on this and the text down below, on the lower left, it says bikeway type. And it says the word sharrow, S-H-A-R-R-O-W.
I was hoping one of you guys would tell me what that is.
Yeah, my friends in high school always said, well, Keelman will ask the stupid questions. We'll just wait for him to do it. What is a sharrow?
So maybe somebody else knows the exact definition. I, I don't, but I've seen them. So I sort of know what they are. Burlington has.
Might it be shared right-of-way?
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Yeah.
It's either a, it's either a bike lane or a shared portion of the traveled surface of the road that is not necessarily a bike lane, but is painted and striped to, to indicate shared use. And, and frequently they have arrows in them to indicate direction of flow for bicyclists and that sort of thing.
I believe there's some in Burlington.
Okay.
Yep, there are. Okay.
One thing that, for me that relates to, to this is what this minimum and maximum front yard setback is. Because that starts beyond the sidewalks, really. I, I took a look at the neighborhood that's Lake Street, a, a very, a much more developed neighborhood 50 years ago was when that was being laid out. And those houses are by using Google Maps, about 100 feet apart face to face. And they're very consistent, which I'm not surprised about actually because of the way the lots were laid out initially. And, and so I'm thinking about, well, we've said you can come within 10 feet of the right-of-way line, but you can't go any further back than 40 feet. Well, that produces about what is in that Lake Street neighborhood now. And to my way of thinking, that's, that's much too far apart for the fronts of the buildings to create a sense of a dynamic commercial area. I think it's fine for residential, but not so much in the commercial where right now we have 10 feet or 40 feet or less in parentheses. So that, that's what I'm seeing right now.
Okay. Let me take Jericho off the screen here and get back to our design standards.
Hi, this is Barbara. Well, Alex is finding what he's looking for. I had the opportunity to walk on that new sidewalk along 116 from the mobile station heading north. It's very scary. The traffic is heavy on, on 116. That sidewalk just feels like you're going to be hit. It's, it's quite the experience. So I don't know, there's not much space in between the sidewalk and 116. So there, you can't put up any trees or barriers or anything. So it's just something else to think about as we're designing sidewalks and streetscapes.
Yeah, it's a really good point, Barbara. And unfortunately, it's so hard to do things the right way. Unfortunately, you think it would be straightforward, especially in the modern age. But on that project in particular, the state of Vermont Wetland Office made it very difficult to pull that sidewalk away from the road. And as a result, your closer pedestrians are closer to the road, although separated from it, but still closer than we would like. During winter plowing, snow removal from the highway ends up on that sidewalk. And there isn't room for a traditional green belt with street tree plantings. And unfortunately, that was all dictated not by V-Trans, who, you know, we were prepared to negotiate and cajole and work with, but by the Agency of Natural Resources Wetland Office because of wetland impacts that had to be minimized. So we definitely need to have standards that, that require street trees and, and have the right separation distances. And I think these typical drawings that Ralph was speaking of will help in that regard. But don't, we shouldn't fool ourselves. Every particular situation is going to present challenges, some of which we won't be able to, to, to sort of bend to our will.
Right, yes.
We, we may have more of an opportunity on the west side of 116 where we designated a wide strip of parkland. And we can back that sidewalk away and it doesn't have to be straight and so forth.
I think you're right, John.
That, that can be where it happens. It is disappointing about the east side.
Yeah. Frankly, the mechanics fell roads corridor sidewalk is similarly well, well-used and, and wonderful to have, but disappointing from a streetscape design perspective for the same reason.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so back to our design standards for streetscape. So I'll scroll down so you can see them all. Apologies for the scrolling. So the first bullet deals with, with landscaping. The second bullet deals with outdoor lighting, which actually doesn't say a whole lot, to be perfectly honest, but it, it's trying to say something advisory. And then the third bullet deals with these utility and mechanical cabinets and equipment. What else have we missed? Ralph picked up a good, maybe the most central one, you know? What's the actual design of the street? What's the width of the road and the sidewalk? Anything else that we may have missed?
Alex, this is Dennis.
Go ahead, Dennis.
What do we do with on?
What do we do with on-street parking during the winter?
Good question. Currently in Heinsburg are, are on town roads, there, there's a prohibition on parking on the street during the winter. In, in reality, the enforcement of that revolves around snowstorms. And so just this past winter, the police department finally decided to be a bit more bold and start having vehicles towed if they were parked on the street during the winter. And so that's.
You guys talking, Alex and Dennis, are you, are you talking about for a 24-hour period or are you talking about overnight parking? Or are you talking about parking anytime in the winter on the street?
Well, I know in South Burlington, in certain areas, they do not allow you to park on the street at all during the winter.
Seems extreme, doesn't it?
Yes. So I'm just wondering, do we have to have? Is this just extra parking and then we have to have parking for these people during the winter? So are we adding a lot more impervious surface than we really want to or?
Yeah, it's a good question, Dennis. In my own mind, especially based on some of the reviews we've done of the Heinsburg Center development where Kenny Drugs and the Parkside Cafe and Deep Physical Therapy are located. That on-street parking is important and, and does serve a function even during the winter time. However, as Ralph pointed out, during the overnight hours, when residential users need a place to park, they need to have spaces that are off the street when, when they're there. And during the day, you know, office users and the like sometimes can flow in and out of those on-street parking spaces. But it's true that during a snowstorm, our road foreman would be the first to say cars need to get out of those on-street parking spaces and into a off-street parking lot.
Seems like one of those things, you know, that could be dealt with on a common sense level. Of course, that doesn't always work. I mean, not having parking, on-street parking in the winter strikes me as awfully rigid and unproductive. Saying that you can't park overnight on the street, thereby giving, you know, snow removal crews the opportunity to clean, you know, between certain hours at least. That seems like a more constructive way to approach it. That's, that's how they seem to do it in Burlington.
Doesn't Burlington have like flashing lights saying that you can't park?
Yeah, yeah, they do. On-street parking forbidden when the lights are flashing.
Was that something? That we'd have to?
I think we should, we could definitely use more flashing lights in, in Heinsburg. Multicolored.
Actually, I might be looking for a job, you know, I could go around and wave a flag, you know?
So I agree with Ralph. I think, I think the, I think it would be nice if there were a common sense solution and, and I think we've been, we actually have been using a common sense solution to date. We do have on-street parking that does get used in the winter time. But I would tell you that our road foreman doesn't agree that it's working very well. So, so he feels that he's blocked from doing proper plowing because people don't remove their cars when there's a snowstorm. So Mike has said, well, we have an ordinance that says you can't park on the streets during the winter. How about we just don't let anybody park on the streets during the winter, period. No matter whether there's a snowstorm or not, and that's because he's frustrated by people not using some common sense and moving their car. But I think that's where the police department, it's helpful that Chief Gambridge has said, we can, we can work with this situation. We can have cars towed. It's not like we have thousands of cars parked on the street in the village of Heinsburg during snowstorms. You know, there, there may be half a dozen if that. And even, even in a build-out situation, Ralph, I think your common sense solution, you know, is possible. It's just a balance between, you know, operational staff like the highway department and planners like us that, that you know, have an idealized version of how things ought to work.
Yeah.
What, what? I guess my point is, is that we've got to have plenty of off-street parking. We can't count on the on-street parking at all times.
Correct, Dennis. I think, and I think that's, like I was saying, is really important on the residential parking load. And might be somewhat less important on the non-residential side as when there's a snowstorm that warrants plowing, the amount of people out and about tends to be less. You know, headed to the Parkside Cafe for dinner or what have you. But it's a balancing act.
I'm curious which, which streets are causing a problem for the, for the highway department?
Principally, Mike has talked about issues with Farmall Drive. And right now, the initial segment of Farmall Drive, which is a town road, that bit of on-street parking is maintained by the developer, the landowner, as is the on-street parking that's in front of Kenny Drugs on Route 116. So Mike doesn't have to deal with that, but it, it, if a car is there and it can't be plowed around, it can still get in his way in terms of plowing the, the road portion. He's particularly frustrated by Farmall Drive, the interior segment in the residential neighborhood, which actually doesn't have designated on-street parking and is not, the, the road widths are not designed to allow for it. But people do park there frequently. And unfortunately, they don't always move their cars when the snow starts. And so he, he has to figure out a way to get around or he has to stop and knock on a door.
Yeah, honestly, that, that sounds like some, coordinating with the police department is the answer to that.
Yeah. Denver, can I ask you a question? Are you there?
Of course.
So this is a Zoom question, not a real question. A new person entered the meeting just a moment ago via dial-in. I was just curious if that was you.
No, that was.
It may have been me, Alex. I muted and unmuted.
No, it's.
I, I joined in recently. This is Doug Stewart.
Oh, hi Doug. Thanks for identifying yourself.
Sure.
I'm just going to rename you in the participant list, so we all know who you are.
Hey Doug.
Hey, and it's good timing. I actually live on Farmall and park on the road every once in a while, so good to hear about that.
Make sure you move your car when it snows.
Right, exactly. Usually it's trying to keep the car out of the driveway so I can, I can snow blow the driveway without car tracks on the driveway. And then I forget and leave it out there. So, good point.
That makes sense.
I'm going to be the devil's advocate here and suggest cars are in the way. They don't, the road doesn't flat.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
This is Barbara. I'm on the phone, so you can't see me. But I would suggest that if the town plow has a trouble getting through, they just don't plow that road until the cars are out of the way.
I think that's totally fine. I would, I would, I would vote for the town to not plow the sidewalk if they're going to continue to destroy my lawn too, to be honest with you.
Unfortunately, Barbara, the not, not plowing create, can create problems later on, once it's time to plow in terms of ice buildup and the like. I will say that, like Maggie said, I think the police department has been communicating with, with the neighborhood that, that Doug lives in to let people know that they'll be, they'll be towing if it's necessary. But there's also a recognition at the town level that with larger projects happening in the village, like the next phase of the Heinsburg Center development or the larger Haystack Crossing development to the north, that we're going to need to purchase a different kind of highway plow truck that is more maneuverable and can more easily deal with these sorts of village streets. So perhaps the situation will, will get easier once we make investments in more infrastructure. But we are having some operational issues now. And like, like Ralph said, I think there are some common sense solutions. It's just easier for us to say that than it is for the highway crew to actually have to deal with it. Maybe tomorrow and the day after, since we're going to get some, we're going to get some snow.
Yeah, we can, we can communicate as a neighborhood really easily too with our emails and whatnot. Just make sure everyone's on the same page. We just need to remember to, to leave the street clear.
Right.
So Doug, this is Maggie again. Did you call with a particular question or interest or you just, you just want to see what we're talking about?
No, it's, I typically work evenings and I've never been able to be involved in any of these conversations. So with the current events going on, I have all kinds of free time to be involved in lots of stuff.
Well, great.
I figured I could at least call in.
Thanks for joining us. We're, we're talking about design standards and we're specifically on streetscape decays. And and Alex just asked if, if, you know, this was it. Landscaping, outdoor lighting, utility and mechanical equipment. And you know, Alex, we, we've, we've already covered porches and entryways in an earlier section. And we've also covered building materials. So I, I can't think of anything that we've.
When you build a road, when you build a road, say for example, Alex, and maybe this is incorporated into that, you know, the town has certain road standards, I presume. Does it get into things like curbing and what the curb is made of and?
Right now, Ralph, our road standards have, are sort of in limbo and they've been that way for several years. We have very rudimentary road standards for a very long time that did not have those specifications that really just dealt with gravel depth, base, base gravel depth when a road was constructed, width and ditch treatment. About two years ago, some work was done by the town administrator at that time to have a much more comprehensive road standard that did have the kinds of details that you're talking about in terms of curb composition, granite versus concrete and, and the like. Unfortunately, those standards were never fully vetted. And so the, the select board hasn't formally adopted them, which is why we're kind of in limbo at the moment. We, we sometimes refer to them, but they're not really official. It's, it's a, it's a project that is recognized as needing to be finished up, but not one that the town administrator or the highway department has been able to dedicate time to do.
Okay.
Personally, I think that would be the right place to have both streetscape typical diagrams and specifications for sidewalk widths and all of that because you can get very specific and technical in those, in those kinds of ordinances, you know, how, what, what the thickness of a sidewalk concrete is and when you use asphalt instead of concrete and all those sorts of things. Harder to put those all in a zoning document. But we don't have that yet.
Yep. What about, what about things like, you know, I'm sort of racking my brain. I see landscaping, outdoor lighting, utility and mechanical equipment. And I'm thinking to myself, there's a lot of other stuff. And, but I didn't, it's not coming to me.
Well, remember that many of the items that you might think of, like the building, the building facade, how close the building is to the street, we've already talked about. And, and I think that this document will be a little more user-friendly after tonight, when I will take out all the extraneous language and slam it all together into a, a one, one set of standards that sort of flow together. At that point, it might be easier to see what we're, what we've missed.
Well, you might notate, you know, like bike parking or bike racks or not always appropriate on a lot of streets in our town at this point, but you know.
So we do actually cover that. And we have a separate section of the regulations currently called off-street parking, which gets after what Dennis was talking about. Provides some guidelines for how much off-street parking there should be. But quite a while back, might have been when we did the Village Growth zoning back in 2009, we added a bike, bicycle parking provision that says for, for the creation of new parking lots for every 10 spaces for cars, you have to have, you have to have a bike rack to accommodate bicycles.
Alright, good.
But where on the streetscape those should be placed from an aesthetics and functional standpoint, we don't have a standard. So we allow the applicant and the board to sort of work that out on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah. Okay.
That sounds appropriate, yeah. I have a comment about utility and mechanical equipment. Particularly, let's see, Denver and the gentleman who called in, if you both live over in the, anywhere where you live, there's a lot of houses that have the utility boxes in their front yard. And I find them very offensive and annoying. And I don't know if we can mandate more clearly that they need to be maybe in the side yard. If I have a house over there, I wouldn't want that box in my front yard. And yes, they have shrubs around them and they've been, some of the, the screening is, is very good, but still it, it destroys the look of the, the front facade.
So, so Barbara, what do you think about the language that's in front of us? The utility and mechanical equipment, the revised?
It says when such equipment must be located in these locations, apparently the front yard. I would like to see them always in the side yard, not the front yard. I don't know if that is something that can be done and why couldn't it?
So Barbara, one of the reasons that, that it's very difficult to do that is that these electrical vaults, as well as some of the telecom vaults run along the street. So instead of, we, we require that utility lines be buried in, in Heinsburg, at least in, with new subdivisions. So normally you see utility lines running overhead in the street right of way, right? Well, they're, they're below ground in new development in Heinsburg. And when they're below ground, there, there have, there has to be vaults on every, a certain, every so, every certain distance, depending on the type of infrastructure it is. And so there, sometimes there's no other place to put those vaults, but, but along the streetscape. Now, once you're, once you have a larger project and, and you have some interior space to work with, with, where you're serving out that infrastructure from, from an interior space, you might have some more flexibility. The Heinsburg Center development where Kenny Drugs is located is an example of that where there are lots of, a whole bunch of utility cabinets on the interior behind the Parkside Cafe, close to their little pocket park there. And so they were able to get some of those out of the, the streetscape. But when you're running electricity along a new street, it's, it's almost impossible to put those vaults anywhere but in the streetscape. And so we might have better luck with heating and ventilation equipment that, that goes along with actual buildings, you know, condensing units and the like, getting those to not be part of the building facade, at least along the street. But I think we're going to have trouble mandating that all electrical vaults be somewhere other than along the street, because many times it's the only place for them to go.
Still frustrated.
Obviously, personally, I wouldn't want a utility cabinet in my front yard, but I think the fact that we've addressed it in this saying to minimize it is maybe the best we can do and still allow the, the utilities to be run appropriately.
We just got to paint them, Barbara. Remember you were, you were, you were our advocate on that to be, take a page from South Burlington and try to paint some of those utility boxes?
Right, I still want to do that. Right, I still wanna do that. Uh the gentleman just doesn't seem to wanna communicate with me.
You'll, you'll get them eventually.
I'll keep on him.
As I understand it, Alex, the power line that's buried along the street feeds into those utility boxes, which are transformers. And those step the power down and from those utility boxes, then the feed goes at a lower voltage to the house. And, and so for the efficiency of the system, you wanna be as close as possible to the main feed to where your transformer is, where you step the power down to feed to the house itself. It's more expensive to take that utility box and move it to the side or move it back out of the front yard because that, all that wiring has to be much larger than feeding from the utility box when it's out next to the street. I think that's what's going on there, just in terms of how the system handles electric flow.
So basically, John, you're saying it comes down to money?
It would be more expensive to move those utility boxes further from the main line, yes.
That and the fact that the utility companies have their own specifications for where those uh where that infrastructure is supposed to be located.
Ba- based on some of these performance requirements plus maintenance. This is something that they have to take care of. You don't pay to maintain that transformer, the power company does.
But again, Barbara, as Maggie mentioned, I think the way this language is drafted, um it calls on a develop, a developer to to minimize the appearance of these, actually to minimize the number of these pieces of infrastructure along the streetscape. And then when it can't be avoided to um to minimize the appearance through screening or artwork or other methods, so. It seems like we're, we're saying the right things, right? It's just a matter of implementing.
Right. I mean, we're doing utilities, so um I, you know, I think what, what we have here in the proposed language is better than what we have now, which is nothing, though.
Oh yeah, I would, I would agree with that definitely. If we have nothing, this is far better.
Are there any other comments on landscaping, outdoor lighting or utility and mechanical equipment?
I, I very much like the suggestion that some of the outdoor lighting could be placed lower than uh than this twenty-foot kind of standard that keeps showing up. Allow it to come down to less. I, I think that's good. I don't like those lights in front of the, the uh parkside cafe that are up at the height of the windows of the house, the residents above the cafe. It would take more lights to distribute on the sidewalk properly, but I think it's worth it.
That's a good point, John, that those twenty-foot high lights in front of the parkside would be a, a deterrent for people living upstairs. So yes.
Alec, Alex, I, I didn't look up section five point two nine. Do you happen uh off the top of your head to remember what are those um, what are those rules? When are pole-mounted lights allowed up to twenty feet in height?
So that's our relatively new outdoor lighting section of those zoning regulations. And um it, that section is pretty robust in terms of uh regulating uh lighting, uh both the intensity and um how the fixtures uh shine downward only and that sort of thing. Even the sort of color scheme and of the lighting. And in terms of height, that section limits the height of pole-mounted lights to, to no more than twenty feet and limits the height of building-mounted lights to no more than fifteen feet. It, it doesn't distinguish between uh parking lot lighting, which often is on a, uh mounted on a higher profile and um wha- what you might think of as pedestrian streetscape lighting, uh which, which tends to be uh lower. So yeah, that's why this, this section talks about encouraging something less than what is the maximum allowed for pole-mounted lighting. But in terms, Maggie, of when it's allowed and when it's not, I don't, section five point nine doesn't dictate that. It simply says, you know, you have to have a lighting plan if you have substantial amount of outdoor lighting. Um and, and that plan has to provide a minimal amount of lighting, has to provide um a good dispersion of lighting, not hotspots and, or very bright spots and very dark spots, uniform lighting, in other words.
Because we're, go ahead, go ahead.
And, and other specifications.
Yeah. So I mean, we're, we're saying it, it shall be designed and scaled for pedestrian use and safety. But we can only say that it's encouraged to be twelve feet or less.
Yeah, so that's a good point, Maggie. Um the, the wording there is intentional. So it, it shall comply with section five point two nine and it shall be designed and scaled for pedestrian use and safety. Five point two nine doesn't necessarily key in on pedestrian use and safety, although it's somewhat implied. This section is saying in the village area, you, you have to make sure pedestrians are, are, are safe. Um and lights are scaled to address them and not just cars and parking lots where cars, you know, reside temporarily. So I, that second part of the first sentence is designed to make sure that pedestrians have a safe lit environment. The second sentence then goes on to say, and we, we, we know that you can go up to twenty feet for a pole-mounted light, but we'd really like you to go less than that um when you're talking about lighting along a streetscape. So it's a, it's a encouragement, it's, it would not be seen as a, as a required um element, the way that second sentence is worded. We could open up five point two nine and differentiate between streetscape lighting and other types of, of pole-mounted lighting and mandate that it be no more than twelve feet um when it's along a, a street. I didn't, I didn't go there with this draft. Uh that's an option.
I, I may as well bring up the other complaint I have about those twenty-foot lights by Creekside. And that is, I thought we had a standard that said you, you, you can't see the source of light. It has to be screened or shaded and, and so forth. They're not, they're not lollipops on a stick. And yet those are, those lights clearly are the bright spot wh- when you see along uh the, the Creekside Kenny Drug uh section of one sixteen. To, to my way of, of seeing those, that's what I noticed, that those lights up in the air. I thought that was not gonna happen.
Uh we should definitely take a walk over there sometime when we're allowed. Um because I've actually held up that development as a, as a well-done uh example of outdoor lighting because of i- it's moderate and it's not overly bright. The light fixtures, the pole-mounted ones that you're referring to, I don't believe they are twenty feet tall. I think they are much closer to the twelve or fourteen feet that, that this new language is referring to. Um and the light sources are fully within the caps of those light fixtures.
Oh yeah.
They are not um an old-fashioned type of street lamp in which a, a large bulb is sitting surrounded by glass and, and, and shining out, but rather they are a light, an LED light fixture that is shining um downward, fully, fully downcast and um shielded. But unless you have a light fixture that's four feet tall, you know, you, any light fixture that's taller than you, you are going to look up and, and see light coming down on you from it. There's no way to avoid that regardless of how high it is. But w- we should look at that one because that, that project is an interesting one.
Getting back to Alex's question about whether we should look at lighting. You know, my, my, my feeling is that, that we should. What, what does everyone else think about, about that? Whether that's something that we should um take a look at?
I agree. Take a look at it.
Yeah, I do too.
For the pedestrian scaled?
Yep, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Alright, then I'm gonna make a note to um to reopen five point two nine and, and try to address that in that section. Because I think that, I think that's the appropriate place to do it, rather than having an outdoor lighting section and then having to refer to this village design standards for another piece of that.
Yeah. No, that's, that's great. That makes, that makes a ton of sense. Okay, so landscaping, outdoor lighting and utility and mechanical equipment, how are we doing? Does anyone else have any comments or are we ready to move on to on-street parking?
Uh, uh just to add, there are several places around the Champlain Valley near Heinsberg that have decorated utility boxes, paintings on a number of them. I think along Shun Pike, I've seen them.
Yeah, we were just talking about that. Barbara has long wanted that to.
Right, right. There's some good exa- I think there's some good examples of that and maybe something even more elaborate could be developed sculptures or something that were built on those utilities.
Well, that would be interesting, yes.
It's a citywide thing, John, in South Burlington. There's an artist that lives there that took it upon herself to beautify those structures and uh it's become wildly popular and the utility company's been supportive and so it's, it's been a positive success story all the way around.
Good deal, good deal.
Yep.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on to um on-street parking.
Okay.
So on-street parking is dealt with at the bottom of page five on the design standard document and um it's fairly simple. There's a, there's a section that deals with it in our current design standards. Um and it encourages on-street parking. Um and so the proposal is to revise that design standard to uh require on-street parking in, along streetscapes that have um a non-residential component to them or a multi-family uh residential component. And that it, and to make it optional um on streets that are, are solely s- serving single-family and two-family neighborhoods or homes. We've gotten for, while you're pondering, um Mitch and I have gotten some feedback on the Haystack project where the uh the developer's uh designer has, is very enthusiastic about on-street parking and has shown it um i- in a lot of, a lot of places in the plan. Which we thought was, was good. Um you know, the, our, our zoning does talk about uh wanting it. But interestingly, when we had more discussions with the highway department, who has to eventually maintain that, they were somewhat skeptical and we realized that, you know, everything is a balancing act in, in um design. And so having on-street parking on every street, even single, where there's just single-family homes being served, really does a disservice to stormwater runoff and control because you're, you're expanding, you know, the, the width of pavement quite a lot. And if those parking spaces are not going to be occupied eighty to ninety percent of the time, it, it may make sense just not to have them there in the first place. Whereas the, the on-street parking that we see in front of Kenny Drugs is occupied a lot and seems to serve a really valuable function, um as does the on-street parking on that initial segment of Farmall Drive, which is right next to those multi-family units where people are going in and out more often and there's a sort of a density there. So anyways, it was, it was part of that conversation that we've been having recently that drove me to draft this language the way it is, which is to require it in some locations and make it optional in purely single-family and two-family residential areas.
The only, sorry, go ahead, Barb.
It makes sense to me to, to say that, for example, as you pointed out, in the Farmall area where there's uh two-family houses, that street should be wider and to accommodate for the on-street parking and where there's single-family homes will be, wouldn't be as acceptable or as necessary. So yeah, I, I support what you're saying, Alex.
Yeah, I may be repeating what you said out, Alex, but um well, number one, you know, each one of these three should, to the extent possible, when feasible, wherever appropriate. I mean, the terminology here is so proximate to one another. I, I mean, yeah, they're slightly different, but I, I think using the same terminology might be appropriate. I think a general statement, you know, um strongly encouraged um you know, um in that first line, I mean, you say required versus encouraged. If we're not gonna require it, I think we should uh aggressively, I guess, or strongly encourage that um you know, on-street parking be um be utilized and maybe, maybe just emphatically using the same terminology. I'm not sure what the terminology ought to be. Whichever one of these is the strongest, I guess, should to the extent possible.
Well, Ralph, um just making sure you're not getting confused between what our current standards say and what the proposed standard is drafted to say. What you're seeing up here um is what we, what we have in our current uh standards.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
What's down here is how one of them would change to be much more explicit. And so I don't know, what do you think about the way the proposed language is sort of bifurcates that requirement? It says you must, you shall have on-street parking in certain circumstances based on you, type of use. But if it's just single-family and two-family homes, it's uh, it's not required. Does, does that make sense or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I uh was focused on that piece rather than the proposed. I guess even in the proposed, you know, I think uh on-street parking uh while not required ought to be strongly encouraged and you know, even there at a minimum in residential neighborhoods to have um you know, we sometimes talk about proximity to the street such that um uh you know, there isn't this uh long driveway, say for example, with uh two or three cars able to be parked before you get to the garage. And to perhaps encourage on-street parking on at least one side of the street. Um you know, so the street doesn't become a four-lane thing, but it at least accommodates some parking on the street potentially, rather than um increased setbacks that come along with longer driveways and so forth, you know? Does that make any sense?
I understand what you're saying. Uh what do other, what do other folks think?
Well, I, I do like the attempt to, to have it relate at least somewhat to density. Um you know, I, I think about those single spots, relatively new single spots across from uh Joe Fallon's and Cone Wrath because of the uh, there are some multi-store or uh multi-family um buildings there and, and those spots are used quite heavily. I, in, in single-family home neighborhoods, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I um. I, what, what's your rationale? I mean, I, I do understand that one of the, you know, one, one uh positive aspect of on-street parking is it slows traffic down. It just slows cars down.
Well, there are a couple of aspects, I, I would say. One is, you know, at least within the village district, we frequently talk about density. And encouraging, you know, to, to, within some limits. And one could hypothesize that um rather than parking on the lot, the residential lot, which is by its very uh nature is going to, in all likelihood, increase um the area of the lot potentially and make it more car dominant. And it's really a question of, as an option, you know, for guests and things like that, that um the street becomes part of the parking scene. Is uh, you know, thereby sort of reducing, you know, it's just another available resource for something that's used on occasion. As opposed to making your uh lot bigger, you, the amount of parking space on your lot bigger. Perhaps it's more advisable to use the street, you know, when that's appropriate, I guess. That's sort of my rationale. Make any sense?
And then, and then use uh like enforcement by the police department to take care of the problem during the wintertime.
Yeah, I guess, you know. It's a problem we're not gonna have for long. You know, because winter won't exist anymore.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Well, we're, we're not gonna have cars either.
That's probably true too.
But what about, what about the, the wider roads that are, that are required?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, is that, I, I, I'm, I get what you're saying about additional parking on the lot, but um.
Well, I, I look at, say, for example, that little stretch of 116 that Alex was talking about, or somebody was talking about. You know, 116 does not feel any wider down there. Uh, there's enough in and out, you know, insofar as what the curbing's doing, what the landscaping's doing, what the sidewalk is doing, that the road doesn't feel any wider down there. And, you know, I think you still neck the streets at intersections. I think there's still an occasional um sort of bump out, you know, to accommodate a street tree, say, for example.
So, so you're talking about in the, in the village.
I, you know, I think you're right. You know, you just have a two-lane road. You know, in residential neighborhoods and um certainly that street I guess has less impact than a, a two-lane road with um, you know, fifty percent of it able to be parked on one side or the other, you know. I, I it's a good question. It's a good topic of conversation, I guess. I'm not sure what the answer is.
Yeah, I'm not either. I, I think about Thistle Hill and um yeah, I, I.
I also think about Thistle Hill, Maggie, in the sense that uh that street was designed without on-street parking. And it's serving hundred percent single-family homes. Everybody's got a garage and a driveway to park in. If that street had been designed with on-street parking, it would have to be at least ten feet wider. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that would have been a positive.
Yeah.
From the standpoint of being a pedestrian walking along through that neighborhood. I quite enjoy walking up there with the more narrow streets that they have. I really think it's a, I mean, and I'm biased. I drafted this language, but you know, whatever. I, I really do think it's a, it's a density issue. When you have uh higher density and, and frequency of use, on-street parking makes all the sense in the world and, and we ought to require it. And that's what this first sentence does, or the, the first portion of the section. But in these residential, purely residential neighborhoods, which are fairly low-density, at least they're single-family or duplex, I'm not sure that we want to compel or even encourage on-street parking because it may do more harm than, than good uh from a streetscape perspective, you know, a, a pedestrian's experience of that street, especially if those parking spaces are typically empty. Part of why I think
Yeah, yeah.
the road doesn't feel wider in front of Kenny Drugs, Ralph, because I agree with you that it doesn't to me either, is because there are cars in those parking spaces most of the time, at least most of the time that I go by.
Right.
Yeah, I was talking more about down uh south of the Charlotte Road, but yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Well, maybe we, maybe we just leave it. You know, on-street parking may be included, but is not required on new streets with single-family or two-family residential uses. What's uh, what's Busher, what's, what's Blackrock doing in their proposal insofar as those sole, those stretches of street that are strictly single or mult- multi-family um?
They have a mix. Um, so it depends on the street. There are some streets that are serving principally single-family homes that have uh on-street parking and others that don't. Um, and, and as I was mentioning initially, you know, Mitch and I reviewing that with, with some input from other departments, like the highway department, we're, we're actually trying to talk to them about whether some of that on-street parking can be removed uh in those portions of the neighborhood to, to minimize the width of the street and uh reduce the amount of stormwater runoff. Especially given that they do, they would be keeping all the on-street parking they have in the more dense portions of the, of the, of the project.
Okay.
Hi, Alex, this is Dennis.
Hey, Dennis.
I, I would definitely recommend having guest parking areas. You know, in this residential. I don't know how many spaces, but we should figure something like, like that out because my daughter lives in a condo in South Burlington and that's the biggest issue is if you have guests, you don't have any place for them to park.
Yeah, and I do think that these multifamily dwellings, whether they're condominium-style or apartments that have, you know, a concentration of people living in them, they need to demonstrate that there's adequate parking, not just for their residents, but for people to come and visit. I, and I do think on-street parking makes a whole lot of sense in, in those circumstances. The, the way that's dealt with Dennis now is that the off-street parking section of the regulations, which we're not, uh, this draft doesn't, doesn't talk about, that off-street uh parking section of the regulations gives the DRB the power to decide what is necessary based on the type of use. And so it's up to an applicant to make the case. Uh, so in some cases, an applicant will say, I don't need any more parking than two spaces per unit, you know, that's fine. And the, and the DRB has an opportunity to push back and say, no, you've got thirty-five condos and you need to have some guest parking. In other cases, like in the Hannahford case, it was the other way around, where Hannahford said, we want a hundred and fifty or forty parking spaces. And, and the board said, really? Why? Can you, can you show us some examples from other stores that demonstrate why that's necessary? And in the end, there was a compromise with a, with a bit fewer spaces. So it, the discretion is really all yours as a development review board, but we could, we could add additional language to be more explicit about the need to accommodate visitors, if, if that's what you're driving at.
That's what I'd like to see.
So if we were to do that, I would recommend that we do it in the um off-street parking section, the same way that we're gonna maybe tweak the outdoor lighting section. We could tweak the off-street parking section to be more explicit about the need for guest parking.
Maybe about the, I, I, I think that's a good point. Um, I, but uh, I, I also don't want to see it go too far the other way with creating masses of parking that aren't, aren't used or um that are minimally.
Yeah, the, the, go ahead, Barbara.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna take us back to Thistle Hill and Creekside. Thistle Hill is a very lovely place to walk and the streets have curves in them. Also, uh, in front of each, mm, beside streets, I'm thinking of my friend who lives there in a duplex, there's no curbing so that on-street parking is easier to do and, at least in the summertime. Winter, well, you know. But, and then Creekside, the, the streets are much straighter and they do have curbing. So the on-street parking is more difficult in some respects because it's more restricted. Anyway, that's, I think, planning the, the roadways through a development, if they have more curves in them, I, I don't think you can put as much on-street parking in them. So it's, it's, maybe it's a natural way to, to get around that. But what Dennis was saying about visitor parking, over at Creekside, I know there's that little little space over near their mailboxes that is gravelled, and I think that could be uh visitor parking too. I think that was some of the intention.
Yep, you're absolutely right, Barbara. When, when that project was approved, uh, the, at, the board at the time felt there was a need for more visitor parking, even though it's primarily a single-family home neighborhood, everyone has driveways and garages. They still felt there was some need and so uh a different sort of on-street parking was created in, in those little concentrated spots.
I, I've also seen similar situations uh where there are maybe two, maybe three visitor parking spaces strewn along a developed street, not all in one place, but scattered around so that people visiting different houses are kind of can get close, plus all of the parking area for the guests are broken into small pieces so that they don't make such a visual impact and traffic impact.
Yeah, that would make sense, John.
Yeah, John, that's what I was envisioning too.
So are, are you okay with that, Alex, to, to uh beef up that, that other section in the regs on off-street parking?
Sure, I'm, I'm at, I, I will do whatever you would like to do. I, I don't think that's unreasonable. It's, it's always nice when we can keep the sections that we're touching small. Um, and so tonight, you've just put feelers out into a couple of different sections. But that's fine. We can, we can make that work.
Alex, can I weigh in here?
Yeah, go for it, Denver.
Is there a parking section, not necessarily referring to on-street or off-street?
The.
Where we could.
The parking section of our regs is the off-street parking section. I, I forget which number it is in our zoning regs, but it's that section.
So what I, what I'm thinking is I had a subcategory that dictated on-street and off-street parking. I, I'm with your stance on um using language that says, well, it's encouraged wherever appropriate, where if it, there is a smaller neighborhood, it might not be great to have off-street parking, but wherever appropriate, we could use it. But then maybe in a, in a uh another category where we, we can dictate, well, we could dictate a number of parking spots per number of houses, like a ratio in a neighborhood, that would say, well, you know, you gotta have two spots per home, but then, you know, for every ten homes, you gotta have X number of, X number of uh guest parking spots. But it wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily pertain to on-street or off-street. It could be either.
Right. I think that's, I think that's a wise way to, to approach it in, in modifying the, the standards that, that we're talking about, is to provide the flexibility to do it either way. Um, so yeah, I'll look into that. I, like Maggie said, I am also cautious about about overkill with parking. There, there have been some studies about how much uh of, of America is covered in parking lots uh and how many parking spaces there actually are and the fact that, you know, eighty, eighty percent of the time, those spaces are empty. But I hear what Dennis is saying and I, I think we can, I think we can apply some common sense language to make sure that it's at least addressed and provide some flexibility on how it is addressed. I like your, your ratio idea as long as it's, you know, got some wiggle room in it.
Great. Any other, any other comments on the on-street parking section?
Oh, can I just um address Denver for a second? Denver, if you can hear me, this is Barbara. On, in the zoning regs, page sixty-nine addresses off-street parking standards. And I, I don't want to comment on it, just let you know, that's where it is.
Thank you.
Okay, Maggie, I'm ready.
So, um you know, it, it looks like we're not gonna, we're not gonna finish the last two um two items that we've got here. So the uh front facade and, oh, I guess that's the last one, actually. Um, I don't know, you, you had us, you had us quitting fairly early, Alex, in order of um.
Yeah, you're in charge, Maggie, so you can, uh, you can take us in whatever direction you want. I'm, I am sensitive to uh what was a somewhat painful uh end to our development review board meeting last night, where everyone was feeling a little overwhelmed with this format of meeting and to, to go on for a full two-plus hours is draining. We have a lot fewer people in this call and, and um I'm not drained, but.
No, it, there's, there's no need to, to plow forward. Let's um, let's just save that last section for um number ten for our next meeting. With any luck, it won't, it won't take that long and.
I think what I want to do, if it's, if, uh, if it makes sense to all of you, is I, I really want to clean this document up because I need to serve the document to the consultant that we select to do the, the graphical work. And the way I constructed this document to date has, i- is basically telling you what our current regs have and then what we're proposing to do. I'd like to get rid of all of what our current regs are doing and just get down to what we are proposing in a clean fashion. So maybe I'll prep that for your next meeting and, and you can look at the whole shooting match as well as those last two items in, in the mix.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
That sounds great. And it was helpful having, having, having that information as we were going through this, but yeah, now it's time to pick them out.
Alex, could you sh- show us the last two sections?
Yes. Sorry, John, good point.
Okay, John, you're gonna have to tell me what they are.
So, so Barbara, for your benefit, the, uh, the last three standards, um nine, ten, and eleven, deal with multi-story buildings, whether we should require or encourage multi-story buildings. And we actually already talked about that at our last meeting, so the, the draft simply says, already addressed in number six. Um, number ten is the maximum length of monolithic building facade. And Ralph worked on some language to, to address that. Uh, and then the last one is the minimum frontage buildout. Which addresses how much of a lot uh should have a building along the, along the streetscape and how much of it could be just grassy, open space.
Okay, good, thank you.
So we'll save those for our next meeting. Um, so let me just quickly, um, before we move on with the agenda, ask people, would it be helpful to move back to having packets? Are there, are there some folks who are having who would prefer to have uh paper copies mailed to them?
Well, I can just print it out if I need it.
Same here. I can, if I can get it out of the Dropbox.
Same here. I can, if I can get it out of the Dropbox, I can print my own copies, and I think I'll do that. That, that can be helpful.
Yeah, it is. It's very helpful to have it in front of you.
Okay, so um, well, that was nice work. We got through a bunch of items there. Um, so uh let's move on to the minutes. Has everyone had a chance? It was um, and Sal, it was a, um, thank you for, for the, for the minutes. They were very helpful in reviewing um our meeting of many weeks ago, cause I couldn't remember. Does anyone have any um, any recommended changes or um?
Sal did use, the, Sal is uh new to the recording secretary position, as you all know, and so she took it in, she took the formatting in, in a slightly different direction and had asked me when she submitted them, does, does this look okay? Hey, and at first, of course, I thought, well, it's not the way we do it, so it can't be right. And then I read it again, I'm like, I actually like it better this way. It's, it's a little more, it's a little more conversational or, or not so much that, but just easier to follow what the point was and what. So I don't know what the rest of you think, but I actually quite liked uh the tweak that Sal did to them.
Yes, having not been at that meeting, I found it very easy to read the, the minutes and understand them.
I'm a huge fan of outlines, and this is how my brain works, and I, I loved it. Yeah, it was really easy to follow, and I, and again, the meeting was so long ago, um, it was um incredibly helpful for for reviewing what we, what we talked about at the last meeting. So I have no changes. Does anyone have?
I'll take a motion that we approve the minutes.
Awesome. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I have. I abstained, cause I was not there.
Dennis abstains.
Okay, and um, and Alex, some other business?
Uh, just two quick items, one of which is in the past now. Um, we get these notifications of our neighbor communities when they have, when their planning commissions have hearings. And the town of Richmond had a public hearing on a zoning change that had to do with their village center, making some corrections to um some zoning that they modified uh a year or two back. And uh Williston uh Planning Commission is holding a public hearing coming up on their new town plan. Uh, and it's not a full rewrite of the Williston Town Plan, uh, but they are adding an energy section to it in order to be, in order to get um a determination from the state, so that their plan will be taken more seriously by the Public Utility Commission when uh renewable energy facilities are proposed. So those are just notice, notifications of public hearings, and neither really has much bearing on Heinsberg as far as I'm concerned, but uh the information, the specifics are in the Dropbox if you're curious.
Hi, Alex, this is Dennis. How are they doing that remotely?
Good question. I actually didn't follow up with uh my counterpart in Richmond to see if their April meeting, their April first meeting actually happened. So I don't know if it actually did. Uh, as far as Wilson goes, uh, yes, they're, they're doing it very much like we're doing it. Not sure if Zoom is their platform or if they're using GoToMeeting or another one, but e- every, every board is using these remote platforms if they're holding meetings at all. Um, and several communities just outright canceled Planning Commission and DRB meetings into May. And quite a few others in Chittenden County are trying to make it work in the same fashion that we are.
This is purely cosmetic, but I thought I saw something where you could choose a background.
Yes.
That's what Alex has done.
What you see behind me is not a, is not a drapery or a, or a.
It's not a green screen?
No, it's, it's an, it's a photo I took from Mount Rainier a long time ago, and yes, uh.
How do you do that? How does one do that?
So you have to have Zoom uh installed on your computer, and, and when you open the software, like you would Microsoft Word, you just open Zoom. There's a little gear icon for settings, and it's in that.
Okay, I'll find it. Thank you.
I will say, Dennis, to your question though, that um our, our meeting with the Regional Planning Commission today, we, we were talking with the town of Underhill, who's uh revising their town plan. They had a whole series of Planning Commission public hearings for that lined up in April and May, and they felt that it wasn't appropriate to, to have those in, in this remote meeting uh setting, because they felt like it would potentially uh discourage public involvement. Um, so they're putting them off, and, and uh I don't think that you all need to worry about that, cause we're not really ready for a public hearing on anything right now, but it's definitely a consideration if this stay-at-home order goes on for uh quite a lot longer, that we need to be cognizant of the fact that this platform is, is, can be difficult for folks.
Alex, you had one more um i- item down, agenda items for the April twenty-second meeting?
Oh, yeah, just wanted to, usually Maggie and I touch base and decide, you know, what's gonna be on the agenda, and, and those flow from our projects that we're working on. So I just wanted to put it on the agenda uh so we could quickly touch on it. Sounds like we'll get, we'll talk more about the, the architectural and streetscape design standards. I hope to have more information about uh consultant selection uh for the des- the graphical design to go with this, these words that we're talking about. You all indicated you wanted some Planning Commission participation in selecting the consultants, so I want to bring that to you. Either at the next meeting or potentially talk to Maggie ahead of that. And then we have the Contractor Yard conversation, um, which I'm not sure will be ripe for the next meeting, but potentially could be an agenda item. Didn't know if anybody else had a topic.
Were we supposed to be, we need, again, as a subcommittee, or are we bringing everything?
So yeah, Maggie, the plan was for me to revise the language to date and, and, and work with the subcommittee one more time on it. But this whole COVID-nineteen thing has made uh scheduling and all that stuff a little difficult, so I, I guess I'll just talk to you about whether it makes sense to just bring it back to the commission and, and try to at least get closer to moving that ball forward, since um we had hoped to have something together by April, and it's now April.
That, that's the uh, the Contractor Yard issue.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, unless anyone else has anything, um, we could uh, we could close um, close the public meeting, and uh people can hang out afterward to chat, if you like. Does anyone else have anything for the Planning Commission meeting?
No, I don't.
Okay, then, um, Jeffrey, we will go ahead and, and uh end the meeting. Thank you so much.